Count me out on this.
Me too.
And, uh, but we appreciate this time of year. Uh, at this time, uh, Robbie, we, uh, we, we want you to remember Israel and your predator. Tonight, we, we gotta hit the bulls out with that today, so, so we want to remember, uh, that, that, uh, country. And at this time, we actually say, ask everyone to stand and we'll have the invocation and the pledge to the U.S. flag.
Let us pray. Lord, thank you for this day and thank you for all the things you've done for us. I want to spend a special prayer out to all the families who've been affected by this terrible storm. I believe it's the worst we've ever seen. I got, as I go down the coast where my place was, I see people displaced that can't afford to be displaced. It's a rough thing to see and it's a tough thing to be around. Um, I want to pray for Israel. Israel's our partners. They believe the way we do and we believe that you will bless them in every way that you can. Um, and I also want to pray for the county commissioners and all the people in county government. I don't know if people realize how the road department, th- these guys have been working every day. I, I don't know that they've had a day off, maybe one day off. And, and that's tough on a family and it's tough on them. They had to go through the storm just like we did. They lost power just like we did and they're working every day. I just want to pray for them, a special prayer for those guys. And for these commissioners that have been dealing with the things we've had to deal with, it's, it gets heated sometimes and we have to pu- we have to understand that people are upset and they, they want done what we can do for them and we're doing our best to do it, I can assure you that. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Staff, is there any deletions or additions to, uh, the night's meeting?
Yes, sir. Uh, because of the hurricanes and everything else, uh, the agenda was done quickly and so we do have some changes we would like to make. Uh, first, we'd like to take item number three from discussion and merge it in with item number one from discussion. We'd like to remove item number four because the, uh, city utility director is unable to attend this meeting. And I would like to remove item number six, uh, the vulnerability assessment because when I looked at the agenda packet, for some reason, the backup material was not in there. And since we made that error, we decided we'll pull it and put it on the November 7th agenda. Having said that, we have six items for additions. And again, mostly because they're time sensitive and did not get in with the hurricane stuff going on, we can just bring that right up. Uh, the first one is to authorize the county manager to sign HMGP and mitigation grant paperwork. The second one is resolution number 2024 R51 supporting Operation Greenlight for veterans. That was on a, that did not get to us in time for the agenda, but Operation Greenlight occurs October, so this is our last meeting before October. Set, the third one is, uh, the use of the Fort White sports complex for Fort White's trunk or trade. Again, that came in after the deadline, but that event is October 31st and we do not have a meeting between now and then. Uh, Columbia County Housing Assistance Plan and procedures, uh, to change to the al- to the housing assistance plan to include manufactured and mobile homes, uh, so we can close out the CDB, finish up the CDBG houses and get them done. We have a couple that are going to need to be mobile homes and so that's why they need to change the housing assistance plan. Uh, number five is the EMPG agreement. That is the agreement we get every year to support the emergency management department. It did not get in here prior to the agenda. It is a little bit more money than we usually get, but not significant much, but it's again funds change department. And then finally, at the last meeting, you approved a budget amendment for allocating funds for Hurricane Helene in the last fiscal year, uh, but failed to mention a dollar amount. So we're requesting a budget amendment 24-55 for a million dollars for Hurricane Helene.
All right. Board have anything? Motion to approve the agenda as a, as amended?
So moved.
We got a motion, uh, so move it by, by Mr. Hollisworth, check it by Mr. Phillips. All in favor, signal a saint eye. Opposed, light sign, that motion carries. First on the agenda, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, commissioners, for the opportunity to come before you tonight and, uh, kind of give you an update on, uh, Career Source. As you probably remember, Career Source is the, what we call the workforce development board in the various regions in Florida now. Um, some of you may know this and some may not, so I'm going to kind of, uh, give you a brief overview of what's happened in the last, actually the last year, but actually in the last two or three months. It's, uh, affected Columbia County. The REACH Act, which was Senate Bill 240, was passed and signed into law in 2023. The REACH Act, um, mandated that the workforce regions consolidate from 24 regions down to 14. Or actually down to, they took 14 regions and combined them into seven, so they're going from 24 to 17. So Columbia County is not the only one involved in this consolidation. There's six other, or 12 other regions that are being merged. Region seven, which is also known as Career Source Florida Crown, which is our local workforce board here, has been combined with region nine, which is also known as Career Source North Central Florida, and it's creating region 26. So they combined, uh, six counties that are involved, Alachua, Bradford, which was region nine, uh, Columbia, Union, Gilchrist, um, and Dixie are now region 26. Uh, since inter-local agreements were not executed by the other counties, um, as of 7/124, the state initiated or mandated that region nine would be the physical agent for region 26 until such time as these inter-local agreements could be, uh, signed, agreed to and signed. I personally agreed to stay on as, as a, on the closeout committee for region seven. Um, I felt like I had been involved with that region for most of its existence and felt obligated to stay and, and make sure that the best interest of the counties that we served was being done. Um, I did not, however, agree to, to, um, be on the board of region 26. I felt pretty strongly about that because of the way the consolidation had taken place. Uh, Robbie knows he was involved in some of the meetings and, um, yeah. Florida Commerce Strong Arms Region Seven, it appeared like they were strong arm in region seven to, to merge. In reality, if they had laid all the cards on the table, um, calm heads could have come to an agreement and this could have been solved and it would, we, I wouldn't be here tonight. Um, however, Phyllis Marty, the CEO of region nine, reached out to me personally and, and encouraged me to attend one of their meetings. I wasn't a board member, but I agreed to, I agreed to do so. Once I, when I attended that meeting, I realized that, that I had the wrong perception of what region nine was. I realized that there were many individuals in region nine who had the same perception of workforce and what, what the duties and responsibilities were of the workforce board. After that meeting, I agreed to become a board member of region 26. The reason I did that was again, these counties are going to be involved. Columbia County, uh, is, is the one that I've agreed to serve, but they're all going to be involved one way or another. It's just who is, i- is, is the local, um, is, is the local, uh, commission's going to be involved. So, um, since that time, uh, since I, that time I attended a strategic planning workshop to develop the four-year plan for region 26. Um, that meeting was attended by the majority of the board members and quite frankly, there was more input and more thought that went into that strategic planning session than anyone I've ever been involved with in 25-plus years I've been on workforce board. So those people are engaged. They're there for the right reasons and, and they're, they're doing a good job and I, I think I can, I can, um, be a party to that and, and give some worth to it. Um, during that strategic planning session, we were, uh, tasked with many things, but one was to come up with a vision statement for the combined region and I want to read that to you. It says, "Provide current and future job seekers with the skills to take advantage of the job opportunities in the region and cultivate a workforce that meets the needs of businesses today and in the future." That's what workforce is all about. Um, so we had a meeting today. There was a, there was a, a meeting, uh, the first meeting of region 26 and it's a combined meeting with the council, and this is where it varies from the way it was in the past. The council is the, one member from, from all of the, the local counties represented. They have, they're meeting jointly with the workforce board. There are certain responsibilities and things that they have to vote on with regard to drawing monies and that sort of thing from the state, uh, or the federal, federal government, uh, that they have to approve. The workforce board itself has to approve how that money is allocated and spent. I want you, that, it's not all good. I want to bring out the one point that, that some of you know about, some of you may not know about, but there's a $124,000 negative fund balance in region seven as we speak today. There's also a, uh, an audit that's taking place on the 24, 24, 23, 24 year. Um, they do not think that it's going to do anything but help the negative fund balance, so they think it might be reduced as a result of that audit. But that 20, that re- that negative balance has to be dealt with. Todd Hutchinson with Alachua County, he's with the Office of Management and Budget with Alachua County, he is on top of it. He's doing everything he can, work with Career Source, uh, or Department of, um, Florida Commerce to reduce that amount. It's been suggested today that Columbia County's attorney, reach out to Alachua County's attorney. Um, and I have, I'm sure he has his contact information, it's Dave Prizano. Uh, he's offered to coordinate working with Florida Commerce and Columbia County to try to resolve the matter, which would involve potential in-kind donations that maybe the county's made. I know the county's made donations to, to, um, Florida Crown every year for the last, I don't know how many years. Uh, that money could possibly be used to offset that, that amount. There may also be things that y'all funded knowingly or unknowingly that were a, a mission of workforce. And if that was the case, that, those, that could also use, be used to offset it. Bottom line is, we feel like that we can get that number down to zero. But if we can't, Career Source Florida Crown had a directors and officers policy that's still in effect and we've extended the, the right to file a claim against that policy for an additional year. So we have that as a backup. And, you know, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna see it through, but I didn't want to come here tonight and tell you that, you know, everything's rosy and all, everything's good, that we still got work to do. Uh, I will tell you that, um, the, uh, there was an inspector general report, which I know Robbie, you were, you were on that list that got that. It was a very damning report. It looked bad, but all of those issues have been resolved. So there's, we're clean on that. We just got to deal with the, with the negative fund balance and I stand before you tonight, I still, I still grapple with how that occurred. Um, but the bottom line is, is it wasn't, it wa- it wasn't maliciously done, but I think that we lacked a little bit of, um, financial oversight, if you will, at that point, not knowing, just taking what the admin department was telling us and, and pretty much thinking that they're the workforce people and they know the best. Um, but in reality, there were some unrestricted funds that were used and we were thinking that that was being used to offset that number and quite frankly, the state sees it a different way. So I stand before you tonight to ask you to consider, seriously consider executing that interlocal agreement. Uh, that interlocal agreement gives you the right to put, um, one of yourselves on that, on that, uh, council and it also gives you the right to appoint an additional individual from Columbia County to represent the county on the board.
Robert. Um, I appreciate it very much, Larry. And, you know, I wanted Larry K., all along, it's been me and Larry K. talking because he's the one I trust that, that is down there and that, really the only one I really know well. And, and it was done in a way that made, that just made everybody clash. It's one of the worst deals I've ever seen in my life. I mean, it was like, it almost pitted everybody against everybody. If they'd just, like you said, come out in the beginning and said, "This is what we want to do," it would have been an easy fix and everybody would have been, it wouldn't have taken three weeks to get it done. So it was, it was really done in a un- a strange way, but, um, but I don't know if we need a motion to do that. Uh, I'm sure y'all, we have more discussion, but, yeah, but do we need a motion to do that?
We'll get George to tell us what we need to do. We'll get ready for it.
Yeah, these are just presentations, so he's, he's sharing this information with y'all. Um, and if you do want to move forward, just let me know, we'll put it on the next agenda.
Okay, that's fine.
He, he, and, 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 and Mr. Hollisworth is right. It seemed like he just pitted all of us against one another. And the state done that and I, I, I don't like it, I still don't like it. They made our work and those employees that work with workforce board look like they were thieves. They didn't say anything about the $2 million was misused or misappropriate, where we going to Alachua County. You never heard a word about that, but they always want to make like those guys, those employees and our local workforce, uh, uh, had done all these things. If they had done everything with accusations about that, they should have been in jail. But nobody's been in jail and you just said that probably all of this is going to be straightened out once all the orders are all done. But that's not the picture they painted, trying to make us folks something down our throat that we didn't understand or we didn't like what, the way it sounded else that's a big, and I, I, that's in my craw and it's going to take a long time to get it out.
Well, Commissioner Murphy, you make a very valid point. I think we all feel that way, the ones that were involved. Um, I can also say that, that every member that I've talked to, every board member from region nine that I talked to felt the same way.
Yeah, that, that was what was so strange to me. We, we were really pitted against Alachua County when really that wasn't a problem. And that's what blew my mind. The gang of people were like, "We don't blame you for being mad." You know, "We don't blame you for feeling like you felt. We didn't blame you a bit," so.
Well, it could, we all, we all agree that it could have been handled better, but we're, we're here today and, and I, going forward, I think it's going to be better. Uh, they are saving money by combining, you know, the admin and, and Alachua County has the staff and they provide the, the, a lot of the services that we were having to farm out over here as far as the administrative, the payroll, the, you know, HR and all that stuff, they're doing it in-house and they're doing it a lot cheaper than what, than what we would have to go out and do it for if we were on our own. So there's, there's, there's a lot of positives and.
Well, Chair, I'd just, uh, like to say to Robbie and Larry, uh, Robbie kept us very well informed in this thing with all the information being fed to him and, uh, I want to commend both of them. And I mean, looking at, me and Larry's known each other a long time too, but for 24 years of serving on the voluntary board, that's pretty powerful. And I'm, I'm glad you're there and I, I appreciate your oversight and, uh, but, you know, these types of relationships all of us have behind the scenes, if you want to say, uh, that's, that's kind of what makes us what we are and, and I appreciate both of you, what efforts y'all put into it. I feel a lot better about it now. I think I'm a little bit like Ron, but the, uh, we, we'll get over it one day.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Uh, uh, we, is there a consensus from this board that we need the attorney to, to work up, uh, an agreement?
Absolutely.
So, so if the board will remember, there were two competing interlocal agreements, you adopted one of them, but it was not the one that ultimately prevailed. Uh, you never adopted the one that is in control right now, so we're going to need to put that on the agenda. That's one item. The other thing I heard Mr. Thompson say is I'm going to need to get with the Alachua County attorney to come up with a strategy for dealing with this negative fund balance. That can be done. That's an easy thing. Uh, Mr. Hollisworth, if you don't mind, you can help me with that. Uh, we'll, we'll all work together on that, together on that. I do want to, and, and what I'll report to you next time I, I present it, I do want to go through the representation concerns that we had. I do know there were some modifications made to enhance our representation a little bit. If y'all remember, that was the number one problem. It was the number one problem. But it, it sounds to me like Mr. Thompson is telling you that he feels comfortable with the level of representation we're going to have. So that's got to go a long way, as Commissioner Murphy indicated. He, he has a lot of experience with this. So if, if it's the board's pleasure, I'll put that on the next agenda and hopefully I'll even have some update on that negative fund balance weekend.
Okay, that's great.
Did I hear you wrong or is there some money that's sitting out there that's supposed to be turned into Alachua County's or something of that?
Well, the Florida Crown has, has money in the bank. It's not the, it's not the money. All the bills, by the way, have been paid. All the invoices have been paid. Um, all the monies have been drawn down. Um, unlike the way we have operated for 24-plus years, um, Alachua County has put up $750,000 to run workforce and then they, they, uh, submit for reimbursement. Florida Crown always drew down money and then remitted documentation to back that up. It's a much better way. The reimbursement way's a lot better way than, than drawing down funds and submitting documentation.
All right. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank y'all.
Thank you, Larry. Thank you, Larry.
Uh, Ms. Barber, advertising and marketing, uh, we're going to get an award.
Uh, good evening. Barbara Karasik, CEO of Paradise Advertising and Marketing for the Record. Um, we are here this evening. Um, Michelle Moore and Kimberly Goldsmith, as well as, um, Commissioner Murphy and on behalf of the Tourist Development Council, um, just, I stand on the shoulders of many giants. Um, but, uh, earlier this year, uh, the Columbia County Tourist Development Council was presented an award by the Hospitality Sales and Marketing Association International, which is an international industry association for the hospitality industry with, um, hundreds, if not thousands of members around the world in 40 countries. And over 800 entries annually are submitted for their marketing and advertising campaigns for hospitality, tourism, attraction, uh, entities around the world. And earlier this year, the Columbia County Tourist Development Council was presented the bronze award for the brand campaign for revitalizing the Columbia County tourism brand. And I can't say without, um, uh, acknowledging the Board of County Commissioners, the Tourist Development Council, the CVB, and all of the stakeholders and the partners, plus the residents of this fantastic county of Columbia County for the support and what this means to, um, the county. Um, the rebrand was a huge, big step in positioning the county to a large national consumer audience and now an international audience, driving tourism for leisure, meetings, groups, sports, eco and outdoors and weddings. It led the way last year in 2023 for a wonderful 2024, um, uh, solid year for tourism for the county. We appreciate your partnership and the brand campaign truly authentically represents and reflects the destination's essence and spurs the audience to want to visit. And as we mentioned at the recent TDC meeting, you know, with the new website, the revamped visitor center, the new brand, social media, paid advertising and public relations that has showed, uh, Columbia County to audiences within Travel and Leisure, Garden and Gun, Southern Living and USA Today. It has increased visitation, occupancy, average daily rate, rev par for our hotel partners, as well as just a wonderful amount of economic impact for the county. We couldn't be happier for the recent, um, fiscal year that we've had. This award is truly, um, a testament to what tourism means for this county from an economic perspective, to sustain the community growth and business impact through tourism. And it's really just a stepping stone for the future for the county and it, this award is really for all of you and thank you so much for your support.
Chair, if I may, uh, I'd like to make a couple of points here. Uh, we've got a couple of TDC, uh, members of the, uh, committee, Janet Patel here and Ricky Jernigan's there in the back. But one thing I just wanted to emphasize, we went through a lot of moving and changes in the TDC in the last couple of years here and, uh, Michelle Moore, she's going to smile and carry on. Michelle's our office manager and, uh, of course, Ms. Goldsmith, Kim, she doesn't work with us at this time, but, uh, she was a very integral part in this, in Michelle. And for a small team, uh, I ha- I struggled years ago when I learned what TDC was, but it, I'm a fan and, uh, we, uh, Paradise does a great job. There is a, we're in great, great hands. And, uh, our interim director, uh, just had a recent, uh, loss of his mother, Clint Pittman, which has been an integral part of what's happening here. And, uh, this is a big deal. Once, uh, I understood that, you know, how many entries, uh, this is one of them things that puts Columbia County on the map. And, uh, with what the ladies do, along with Clint, directing them, they direct Clint, uh, it's, it's been a, it's been a good experience. It really has and, uh, we got a good team and, uh, we definitely, definitely appreciate what you guys do out there. I know you don't get the recognition that you need to sometimes, but we're, uh, we, we do appreciate it. And Paradise, uh, every time we call you, you're there and we, we dearly appreciate that for sure.
It's our, our pleasure and our honor.
Well, we, we appreciate it and I'm sure y'all want to get a picture, say, what we want to do.
Yes, we can. We can do that now, is it nice? Sure, absolutely.
Ricky.
You're going to squat down a little bit, bud.
He's taller than Tim.
Tim, 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 just slap him, either, just slap him.
Don't let Tim stand too close to him.
Where's Tim?
Hey, Bruce. Got someone authority.
Uh, Louis. Good afternoon, commissioners. Um, the first item we've got for public hearing here is, uh, ordinance 2024-20 for the consideration of application Z240801, which is a request to change the zoning on a parcel. It's the map, indicate, uh, the map is in your package there, just south of town on 47. To change this zoning from CI to RMF, residential multifamily one. Uh, the curious thing about this, just several years ago, this was on residential, uh, single family, so it's just return, the request is to go to residential multifamily.
All right, who's, what district is this in?
Five.
Well, he's not on here.
Yeah.
I've told him so many times, man.
Yep. They hard learners, ain't wrong.
Uh, I declare the public hearing open on ordinance number 2024-20. Would there be anyone in opposition of this land use change? No one in opposition. I declare the public hearing closed. Uh, what's the wishes of this district commissioner zoning request?
Uh, Chair, uh, they, uh, shared with each one of us, brought a brochure. This, uh, appears to be a great project to me. Uh, Mr. Tim Williams, which is one of the partners in the project, uh, uh, did something some while back with economic development out there at, uh, back with Economic Development out there at the reserves. And they've got a local engineer here, she's kind of popular to everybody. She, they're in good hands, I think. But as I told them, they're all my friends, but I told them, we're zoning something right now, but they'll design it where the puddle of water don't stand out there like it did back years ago. So I look forward to that, and just for the record, but I'll make a motion to accept this zoning change, parcel number 194S 08496-000.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Murphy, second by Mr. Hollingsworth, all in favor of signature by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. That motion carries.
Okay, the next public hearing we have is ordinance 2024-21, considering a request of zoning application, Copperland Amendment 240801. This is companion bill to the previous one, changes the future land use to residential medium, which is commercial now.
All right, I declare the public hearing open on ordinance number 2024-21. Would there be anyone to speak in opposition? No one to speak in opposition. I declare the public hearing closed. Mr. Murphy, this is still your district.
Yes, sir, I'll make a motion to accept this presentation.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Murphy, second by Mr. Hollingsworth, all in favor of signature by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. That motion carries. Thank you, Louis.
Thank you, sir.
Joel, you on for?
Y'all on to the next step.
Hey, let me ask you, can I ask Dylan something? Where did Collinsworth's name come from? Okay, all right. I thought, I didn't know if Chris Collinsworth was in on this.
Ms. Joel.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. This evening I have for public hearing an adoption ordinance number 2024-22. This is the ordinance I referenced a couple of weeks ago that goes in and pulls out of our prohibited activities on county property ordinance, the provisions relating to solicitation and lawyering. As you know, the homeless voice folks, the COSAC Foundation, did file a lawsuit some time ago seeking to enjoin the enforcement of the anti-solicitation provisions. The judge that was hearing the case found that it was overly broad, entered the preliminary injunction. That threw us into settlement negotiations. As I told Commissioner Williams the other day, once the judge gives you that advance notice that she finds it too broad, you're probably going to lose the trial. Our council did a good job of defending us, settled it on monetary terms, but one of the conditions was that we repeal this. I recommend the repeal because if the judge enters an order, then we have to take our code in that order and always go back and match it up. If we just repeal it, it fixes it, cleans things up for the future. There is a state law that prohibits the blocking of the entrances of public buildings, so if that, if it becomes an issue again, we know we can deal with that. We do have assurances from the homeless voice folks that their folks will not interfere with the entrances to our buildings ever again. So we hopefully have that understanding, but if not, we do have a state law we can rely on. So with that, it's council's recommendation to adopt after you conduct public hearing.
All right, I open the public hearing on ordinance number 2024, I'm sorry, 2024-22. Would there be anyone in opposition of this ordinance? Not seen any. I declare the public hearing closed. A motion to adopt ordinance number 2024-22.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Ford.
Second.
Second by Mr. Murphy, all in favor of signature by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. That motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Phillips.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hollingsworth, all in favor of signature by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Hollingsworth, second by Mr. Murphy, all in favor of signature by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. That motion carries. Mr. Kevin Kirby.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Tonight, we're here to do a Hurricane Helene organic debris, I'm sorry, update, and this is your item number one and three as it relates to the finances of that hurricane. So I'm pleased to announce we're all back to school, we're back to work, all of our garbage is back to normal, our contractors are all back working, we're playing ball, we're playing our sports again. The only significant thing we have other than organics, we still have a fence or two to put back up, we still have the boardwalk and follow creek to repair. But besides that, then we'll get into our organic debris conversation, you're back to normal. So before you, there's a map, indicated in red is your state road system of Columbia County. Indicated in yellow are the areas that we have covered thus far. Obviously, I prepared this about a day and a half, two days ago, so it's, I've kind of captured where we're at in yardage right now. We're estimating roughly 250,000 cubic yards out there. That number, I think, increases every day by folks putting it on the road. In 16 days of recovery, remember, we're 21 days into this event, 21 days, we got hit by the worst hurricane in our knowledge, 21 days ago. We obviously, we cut and tossed, we got everything ready, we started removing our organic debris 16 days ago. We picked up 55,000 cubic yards at the time of this riding. We went north of 60,000. I got a report, why I got here tonight? That gives you about 3,500 cubic yards a day. We've covered roughly 275 miles, so let's talk about the miles of Columbia County. We have 1,100 centerline road miles or 2,200 lane miles. So to put in that perspective, drive to Rhode Island and back, it's 1,100 miles. Rhode Island and back, it pick up a pile of debris every few hundred feet as you go there and as you come back. We've covered roughly 25% with our first pass. I want to stress hard on first pass. Many of our constituents have reached out. Are y'all coming back? We are. We had a maximum 25 assets during our initial push. We are currently managing 15 separate collection assets in addition to your local crews. So what does that mean? I've taken position, we have this first window to get 100% reimbursed with FEMA. We've not taken our normal guys back to normal operations. We're still hitting it as hard as we can to take advantage. We're joining in with our contractors to take advantage of those first 90 days. So we have a lot of conversation. Idalia was our worst storm of history back in 23 September. That was our worst storm at that time. Helene obviously trumped that. It took us roughly 39 days to remove 54,000 cubic yards in Idalia. In 16 days, we removed 55,000 yards. That is indicating to the public that's how hard we're pushing at this event. We discussed some neighboring counties. And you can see, they started 13 days ago of recovery, and then moved 2,700 cubic yards. We removed 55,000. To my knowledge, we've hit this as hard or harder than anybody in North Florida, only because we started real fast. I want to give a hats off to this commission for our support and my guys out there making this happen for us. Here's a kind of indication of what we're doing to throw at it. You've got your contractors, you've got your in-house trucks. So if you're to ask me today, how long is this campaign going to take? When it grows every day? I was on 240 West earlier today. A few days ago, we had it completely cleaned, Grand Avenue Highway, Columbia City, it was done. You go down today, it does not look like we've been there. Does that make sense? So our constituents, they continue putting debris out by the road for right reason. So when I said that 250,000 cubic yards, I forget the day of the storm or post-storm, we went and sent a team out to asset inventory. That was an accurate number at that time. I do not believe that's the number today. As far as the financial part of this, let's assume it's 250,000 cubic yards, and I believe that's a very conservative number. You will spend on organic debris pickup contractually alone, 4.808 million dollars. That's guaranteed. That's not counting your in-house crews, landfill. So all your departments have stood down with exception of the landfill and public works. You're still working a lot of hours, burning a lot of fuel. 4.808 organic transportation and earning, that's your number at 250,000 yards. You could obviously throw about another million and a half in-house to that. That's for the organic side of the storm only. When you capture all the fence repairs, the dugout repair, the follow creek board repair, the building repair, which once again, we're all back to normal for the most part, that number's going to creep up there a little more than that. So David and I have talked at length about this. I want to use the word fortunate, I don't know what other word to use. We kicked off a fiscal year October 1st. As a result of that, we're working with a fresh budget, so we're okay. Now, obviously, if you budget $100,000 for the tree crew per month to operate, and you're spending 250, 300,000 a month right now because of the storm, a few months into now, that's going to be problematic. That's why we have reserves, right? So David and I talked, we didn't think it was wise to keep talking about that part of it. You know, a few months from now, it's reasonable to think we're going to save six or seven, maybe eight million dollars is going to have to come out of reserve to cover this problem, and that's what we have them there for. As far as, two other things I want to mention as it relates to hurricane, we've been operating the landfill with extended hours, seven days a week. That just is not worth it. They're not, they're not taking advantage of the after hours, and they're not taking advantage of Sunday at all. So we're going to go ahead and ramp back down the landfill to six days a week, we're still going to work every Saturday, our normal seven to five operation. They're just not taking advantage of Sundays nor the extended hours. So that's something important to talk about. And the other thing is on our contract mowing. On one of our urban contracts, one of our roadside contracts, they will complete the next two final cycle, basically tomorrow or Monday, one with the other. And that leaves you one cycle left on your roadside mowing and one left cycle on one of your urban contracts. I met with my contractor today, and he was gracious enough, he's ready to go ahead and start his final cycles. I said, Jeff, give me a six-week break, come back December the 1st. And my goal is to get organics out of his way over the next six weeks, so we can do one final clean pass and do a better job for us. And he agreed to do that for us, that was a lot of help. So though he's ready to go, it was, it was me that requested, give me a little break, let's try to get some of this out of his way. It's hard for him to work out there. But long story short, I'm very proud to announce that we're back to normal, with exception of a few loose ends in the organic debris pickup. Guys were 21 days post the worst storm that ever hit us. In my opinion, we're doing a great job. It's tough. We are competing with several other counties as far as trucks and contractors of the states. What I have learned about this, when we get through with this one, I will establish multiple contracts versus one. FEMA does not look fondly on stating contractors during the state of emergency. They want pre-emergency contracts. We have them. It's not our contract, but when you're isolated to one contractor, that's exactly what you got, just one contractor. Once again, we removed 55, we removed the same amount in 16 days that we did during Idalia in 40 days. So we thought we were doing real good in Idalia, we did a lot better this time, but there's a lot of it out there.
Kevin, in Idalia, we done it all in-house, right?
No, sir. That was the first storm we contracted out.
Okay.
Idalia and Little Diddy. Prior to Idalia, we did everything in-house. Idalia was the first time we ever used outsources. And I didn't ever think that we were going to need it, but boy, we do. This is your third storm that you've used outside contractors in addition to your local forces. You know, my whole goal is, you know, the fair is coming, and we always go and take care of the parking lot, patch up things. And I had mixed reserves when I sent a crew out there, I said, but you know, we got to get back to normal. As silly as that sounds, you know, every time I take those four or five guys and go get the fairground ready, you know, and that's what we do, it's tradition. We're trying to juggle all that guys, you know, and we're doing our best to get back to normal. We have the same old thing, we have ditches that need to drain, we have potholes we need to fix, grading roads, and, you know, we're trying to put everything back together. And none of us are experts on this, but I can, I think that as a team, everybody in this room and our outside crews, all those men and women that somebody, I think, Mr. Hollingsworth indicated in prayer, you know, I'm proud of them, they've done a damn good job. So that being said, I'm pleased to announce that we're in good shape. You know, we're in good shape, we're going to continue to get better shape. Sure, we have a six, eight million dollars, I don't know what the number is, I know it's five million plus, but that's what we have reserves for. And we'll get it buttoned up, and we're going to keep on working till we get it buttoned up.
Kevin, the, and I, and I, I know you having a nightmare when you clean this road and you come back and there's dead stuff back on it again, and I guess all you are going to drive your district, you still look in the backyard, there're two, three trees on this house, and you move down another tree in the yard there. But I think the problem you are having is with these people doing cosmetic cutting. And we need to, we need to kind of talk about how we going to address cosmetic cutting because they'll say, well, I'm not going to leave these trees in my yard, the next time, come by there and pull on my house, and they cutting them down. That does not have anything to do with the hurricane. So Joel, you got any idea of a way that we can address that?
I do know other jurisdictions prohibit cosmetic cutting during states of emergency. We don't have that. And, you know, in terms of enforcing prohibitions, we have challenges with that too, as Kevin indicated. We got so many boots on the ground, and, you know, the way our code enforcement operates probably wouldn't be too efficient either. I think in terms of that cosmetic cutting, the reason Mr. Kirby is able to observe it is he goes to see these piles, and it's not dead stuff, it's fresh cut. And if it's fresh cut, you know, 15, 16, 17 days out from the storm, it did not fall in the storm.
I saw some cut today.
Yeah, and so, so one of the ways we could enforce would be obviously just don't pick up anything fresh cut. I don't think that's going to work either. That's not going to fly. One of the things we discussed, kind of to be more positive and maybe encouraging to the public, is, you know, if we could just ask people, and I know it sounds kind of weird for the attorney to just say ask as opposed to demand, but if we could just ask people, please try to get your cleanup done by the end of the month, try to get it out there so that we have some bookend. I think Mr. Kirby's problem, and he's going to continue to have it, is if there is no bookend, we need to do this indefinitely. You know, people just keep cutting and throwing stuff on the side of the road. We could be doing it forever.
I was going to say, we got to put a deadline.
Yeah. So I don't think we're at a point where we really have enough of a stick to say, hey, if it's not out by the 31st, because we can't monitor it as much as we'd like to. But we definitely need to tell the public, encourage the public, get it done by the end of this month so that we have some idea of our end game. And if we can encourage that and hopefully get people motivated, like you said, Commissioner Williams, those trees that are sitting in backyards, if people say, well, I'll get to it when I get to it, we need them to go ahead and get to it so we can get it picked up.
Okay. Mr. Kirby, our next board meeting, kind of give us another update and see if after we are asked to, the news outlets to run this story about the cosmetic cutting, and we can put it on our website also, that we're not going to pick up cosmetic cutting anymore, and see how that works.
And Mr. Williams, board, oh, I do want to take that a step further. So the thing I did different during this storm is we took and entered another phase. So my guys, we cut and tossed, but we actually utilized our contractors, unlike we did in the previous two storms that we used contractors, we went and bundled this material up very quickly. We covered it countywide. That has also been a tool in our toolbox to allow us to gather it quicker. So now that folks are taking it out there, not bundling it up, that makes it more cumbersome and less efficient as we're picking up. So if for more than one reason, if we could encourage everybody, please get it out there. It sounds simple enough, picking up limbs, but it's not. It's a very strategic game, and I just want to get it out there for the public. Our contractors get paid by the cubic yard. They're using a lot of subcontractors. So I have people say, why are you not working here? Why are you not working there? Are you working there? Real easy answer. We are competing with our neighbors. So when a guy, a contractor comes here, and he can get 300, 400 yards a day, whatever math is, that's about what it is, we have to ensure that we put him in areas dense enough for him to do that. Because if we put him on Road X, that has a pile there 1,000 feet, he's going to be gone tonight. gone tonight. We don't, we're not doing benefits, a sick leave, and annual time of vacation, retirement. They're here for one reason, to make money, right? So I do wanna put that out in the public, it's a method behind the madness, and that's why, Mr. Hollerworth, you had a constituent come in the way up here today, y'all hit the road right behind me, y'all didn't hit my road. Yes, sir, you're right, I know exactly where you're talking about. You have a few piles in the road, but we'll be back. But that's gonna come at a later date, when we're a little more flexible with only getting a couple hundred yards a day. That make sense?
We're gonna get the most at the most right now, to get those contractors happy.
We're, we're really working for them, we have to keep it busy.
And, and they can go from basically Miami or Corr Gables to North Carolina.
Yes, sir.
They can leave us anytime.
And there's one thing about it, if I was a tree contractor, I'm gonna go work in Miami, 'cause they pay more, okay?
Kevin, uh, and I, when, 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 when the call me, I just tell them, the county gonna pick it up, but I'm gonna tell you, sir or ma'am, I can't tell you when.
That's right.
I just tell you, we gonna get it.
That, that's why I'm telling, I mean, twenty-two hundred miles of piles, everybody's, we say eleven hundred, but that ain't right, it's twenty-two hundred miles of, just drive twenty-two hundred miles, how long's it take? Just to drive twenty-two hundred miles, forty miles an hour. I mean, think about that, and then you gotta stop every hundred yards and pick something up, so, and sometimes every ten yards, you know, so it's, it's just, it's a huge job.
Chairman, I, I, like I say, I would, I would like to emphasize, at the next meeting, I would like to have an idea when we can set a deadline.
Yeah.
This last day you put out that. Because, you know, we can encourage it all we want, but till we put a deadline.
Somebody mentioned the first of November, that's a reasonable goal, okay?
That number we gonna have.
Sorry?
That number we gonna have. We need to give them more time than that.
It's two, well, it's two weeks.
Well, I'll, I'll come back.
I'll take your recommendation, I, you know, we're dealing with it, you know, you know, we're gonna act, so.
I, I think somebody mentioned a while ago, we can do this forever, y'all.
That's what I'm saying, we can, yeah.
A- and then, 'cause it's, once again, several constituents have reached out to me that thanked us here in Idalia, they're getting hits, and I, I think the reason they are is these back-to-back storms, people are tired of it. And I said, guys, and when I say, you realize we've done as much as fifteen or twenty days that we did in the entire event, Idalia? No, that, that, that's, that's math, that's not me talking to y'all.
Because they just looking in their front yard.
Right.
They're not looking in the front yard, y'all.
But we'll, we'll wait to the next meeting, but somewhere we need to encourage our public, if they want us to get it picked up, cleaned up, they got to get it out there and quit taking it out there.
Kevin, at the, at the next meeting, this board will accept your recommendation on the, just accept.
Okay.
I got a comment card for you, uh, uh, Blair. He, uh, I wanted a question on the update.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I kinda took advantage of your, getting about it and took advantage of agenda a little bit, 'cause I didn't wanna wait for the, uh, comments, I don't have the time. But what I wanted to say, consistent with this, I attended two of the EOC meetings out there in person. I watched the one for Lena on YouTube, and I just wanna say that, uh, I left those meetings feeling confident and assured, that the, that the people at those meetings, the, the county commission, the city council, or the school board, I left there feeling that when the storm come, that I kinda gonna be ready to attack the problem. And, and I, I had to say that, because I, I am a critic, and I, I'm unapologetic in my criticism. But I also need to know that, want you to know that, when I left those two days, I left there feeling assured that when the storm come, that we gonna be prepared to take care of it. I, I listened to the county control, I listened to the county commission, I listened to the school board, I listened to Kirby, I left there feeling good about where we might be. Now, I know what the storm's gonna bring, but I left there knowing that the next morning that this county gonna be ready to go to work. And I'm glad it didn't come, but I, I, I recognize, uh, the, the, the level of cooperation, the level of collaboration that took place out there those two days. And I had to be there to really feel it. I watched it on TV, is one thing, but to be in that room and see how everybody was talking about gonna do this, do that, and when it was all, everybody was like, I gotta go to work, got, nobody stood around talking and having a good time, went back to work. So as citizens, as families, I want them to say that, I left there impressed, and I hope that if, if there be another storm, I, I'm sure that it gonna be the same type of cooperation, same type of collaboration, and I really felt good as a citizen, I just want you to know that. And I, and I just took advantage this time, 'cause I couldn't wait for public comments.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, uh, Bruce Bortles, you had, uh, about the storm? You had about the storm, go ahead and say something about the storm.
Yes, sir. Are you ready for me?
Yes, sir.
Thank y'all for, uh, giving us the opportunity.
Give, uh, give the clerk your name, give the clerk your name.
Bruce Bortles. I live out there by Lena State Park. I, uh, I wanna first thank, um, our, our county manager and, uh, his crew, and also our emergency manager, and all his crew, he's been there thirty years, he's been charged since two eleven. But my, my plans, my, my gripes are, I got a note trespassing from Fort White High School and everything, and the county commissioners, I only seen three, I didn't say all five of them weren't working, but I seen Everett, and I seen Mr. Seppertank, that's what I call him, and also the one on at the end down there. And, uh, they did a good job. Uh, Rocky was walking around, and the only thing he carried around, you know what it was? Toothpicks, so he could keep his eyes open, he was about to fall. And, but he did, uh, and I seen Everett out there, out, but, uh, anyway, but he was at Lulu, but anyway, they did a good job. But my thing is, uh, when the bad storm come in, uh, we were going to Fort White High School, they said, me or my wife cannot go up there.
And all.
Well, I don't care if you don't like me, my wife is, only way she can walk now is by a walker, and she's in a wheelchair, and she has to have special needs for like the shower. But, uh, anyway, I don't care. Then we went up there to, um, to Richardson, that dog looks just like he's doing right now. They said, no dogs allowed, no dogs allowed, this ain't you, this ain't this man here, it's not, uh, Shane. None, none of them, but anyway, um, um, they, uh, they wouldn't let us go, so we went to the friendly shelter, we were there a day, and I talked to Rocky, and he said we could come down there, okay? This last storm we had, God blessed us, no, nothing was hap- happened in that hurricane. But they come up there today, the day that we were, uh, we were leaving, we were already packed up, leaving, and a deputy sergeant called up there and said that my wife and myself had to leave, couldn't be there. Now, I've already been told by, can I finish my sentence?
You need to wrap it up now, Mr. Bortles.
Okay, but, um, anyway, uh, I was already told by county commissioners, them three that I just mentioned, and all, that they do not own them places where you vote, and they do not own the county parks. And he told me personally that I could.
You need to wrap it up now.
Go to any county park.
Yes.
But now they're saying, we couldn't, the supervisor elections had to call the, the sheriff till January the sixth, and he said, well, we'll make a section, he can vote. But is it true, sir, that y'all own?
Your time is up, Mr. Bortles, your time is up now.
All, all, all them buildings, that's what I wanna know, that's what the man told me, that y'all own that, all, all, own them buildings and, and, uh, county parks, is that correct?
Yes, sir. All right, your time is up now.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Can you answer my question, or what?
Your time is up, Mr. Bortles.
I don't know.
Is the question, do we?
I'll get with you after me.
Okay.
Is the question, do we own the schools' buildings?
I think he's wondering about voting.
It's like he's wondering about voting. How's he going? Now, you get to, you get to vote, notwithstanding in the trespass.
No, no, the, at, uh, fourth district, community center.
The community center is county property.
All the community centers all by, by the county.
That's correct, yes, sir.
And they control that. The sheriff, the sheriff of Columbia County doesn't, he's there for protection, uh, of the people, like if somebody hangs up there, my dog bites somebody, they're there for that.
We, we, we have a shelter now that's, uh, that where you could go and take your dog, but it's in Lake City, it's not down in Fort White, we have a animal-free, free shelter, they call it, and you can bring your dog and stay at that shelter next time.
No, sir, no, sir.
By stature, we have, by stature, we have to provide a shelter for folk like you, and we have one now.
Yep, that's true, but that's for pets, this is not a pet, this is a service dog.
All right, all right, Mr. Bortles.
I can go anywhere.
Uh, Mr. Bortles, getting with you?
I'll get with you.
All right, thank you very much. You wanna talk about the storm? It's about the storm?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, ma'am. Now, your card don't say.
Good afternoon. My name is Betty Goggins. My name is Betty Goggins, and my husband, Reverend Melvin Goggins, and I have resided in Lake City, Columbia County, since nineteen seventy-eight, and we retired from the school system. But, uh, I'm here really just to get some clarity and answers on, on how the system is working with the debris pickup. But first, let me personally thank each of you for your guidance and your leadership during this one-two punch that we had in our county. Uh, I can say I appreciate each one of you, because I know it took hours away from your families to do that, you had to be in meetings, and I think it, it's going quite well, I really do. And I'm standing because, um, uh, I'm wondering how the debris pickup is going when it, when it's around the schools. Um, in Grand, on Grandview, I'm not sure who's representative of Grandview Avenue?
Here, here, we can't answer that.
Okay, okay, what, Grandview or Summers?
Let me help you out, let me help you out. The city, they are responsible for anything inside the city limits. We are responsible for everything outside the city limit. Your area in Grandview and all of there, those are inside the city limit, so we can't, we don't know what they're doing, or how they're going about doing it.
Okay.
So we, we can't help you, uh, uh, give you any insight on the inside the city limit, or you have to go to the city council meeting to get that.
Okay, okay.
You know, the next one?
Okay, and, and it just so happened, I'm, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, I do know that the last meeting we had, EOC meeting, the city manager said he was gonna get with the same contractor we had to work at the city too, so I don't know where they're at with the cleanup.
Okay, okay.
Well, I know they're cleaning up.
Yes, okay, okay, and I personally live on Camp Street, I'm just one block from Melrose Park Elementary, and I, I have to witness children walking to and from school, and they're walking in the street to avoid where they told residents to pull their stuff, and it's brown stuff, trust me, it's not new stuff, it's stuff that's been there when they told us to put things out. And it's, it's safety issues, and I'm very concerned about it, because, you know, they walk back and forth, and they're walking in the street. I just didn't, I just wanted a timeline, and Mr. Ron Williams, you know, I know you'll get the job done, I just said, I get this come before you, I know.
I'll share your concern with the city manager tomorrow.
Okay.
All right.
All right, and thank you again for your service, and, uh, good luck on the election.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right. All right, we're going to move number three up, uh, uh, under number one. David, you're, you're on, but we're moving you out of number three up.
Uh, basically, that's kind of what Kevin had talked about, we're anticipating the cost of this being about four or five million dollars. Uh, we will come to you, the way it works is, since it happened at the end of last fiscal year and into this fiscal year, those invoices we received last fiscal year, dated last fiscal year, we paid out of last fiscal year, those invoices dated after October first, will be billed into this fiscal year, the majority of the costs of this storm will affect your current fiscal year. Now, when we get closer to December and January, as Kevin was saying, we're gonna come back to you and say, this is the impact on this year's budget, we're gonna need to take some funds out of fund balance, out of our savings account, to shore up this year's budget, so that we can make it through the end of the fiscal year.
I understand.
But with a storm this size, you know, it was not included in our budget, so this is all unanticipated expenditures. As for last year's budget, it included two storms, Idalia and Debbie, and a little bit of this storm. We have received approximately fifty percent of our reimbursement on Idalia, and have not received reimbursement yet on Debbie. Uh, the way they've got it work is it's an expedited process where they give you fifty percent upfront, then they drag out.